No, no, you're fine.
We're ready.
We'll go ahead and start this meeting at six oh one. Welcome everyone. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. I do need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Move.
We have a motion in a second. If I may say aye or a no, any opposed. Hearing none, the motion carries. This did become actually a special meeting we have to approve the STC or the STUC.
Stuc.
Stuc, the leadership field trip.
And what is that?
Oh, student council.
Yeah, Stuc, student council.
What is STU?
STU is student.
Council.
Yeah.
Anytime you use an acronym, you push it out.
What's my whole world exactly?
Oh, I see we changed the date. Okay, good. Are the, I'm assuming the three Stuc advisors are adults, or are they not?
They all are, yes.
Okay, okay. So four, that's right, nine kids. Ten kids. Ten for eleven kids. Twelve kids almost, per person. That's a lot.
Okay, Johnson, to Lakeland High School, we'll be down there as well.
Right. This was overlooked for our last meeting, just so we have some perspective, I guess.
Chairman Thompson, actually, I had the, said it was oversight on that part.
Right. No, I understand that. I wasn't implying that we...
I didn't want to, I didn't want us to forget.
It was an oversight on Lakeland's part to get it to us at last meeting, so. Okay. It was because it's been over by third and fourth. My question is just what would they have done if we weren't meeting for a workshop?
They wouldn't wait, I guess. He did apologize. That was all the point behind it.
I understand that, and Matt's very good at staying on task with his deadlines.
Yes, I agree.
How do we approve?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. If I may say aye, aye, any opposed. Hearing none, the motion carries. We will move into the presentation, discussion for IVB guidelines and procedures.
Governor Morton, I'm the chair. I've created a presentation for you guys. It's more for to keep me on track. I just, I want some kind of, some feedback on how you would like to do this. If you want me to present it to you, I will do it, or if you want me to go slide by slide, let me kind of read through it, let me get some highlights, or ask questions as you go. I will go as you go. So, maybe a little feedback?
We don't have a presentation, so.
Okay.
We weren't provided with anything.
You were usually provided with the, the first form, the written out IVB pro proposal. This is why we got here in the first place, but yeah, that's.
Actually, we have nothing on our agenda. Yeah, there's nothing.
It's from a previous forum, because we went through it once before, and then you ask questions and we ask in the workshop. That's all. So, so that's fine. That's good. Then, well, it's an easy decision. So with that said, I have done this presentation, and basically it was taken right from the, the IVB that I created and that we presented to the board, showed it to the board, and we decided to do a workshop with it, which I think was a great idea. With IVB, it talks about the purpose and guidelines and procedures. That's what this is. And the, why we do this is to clearly set guidelines and procedures for the inter-based party IVB. IVB is collective. It's structured approach. It's a structured approach. It emphasizes multiple, multiple respect problems solving and shared responsibility. Decision focus on best interest of students, staff, and the district, but more importantly, it really underlines the why need and why we focus on those particular issues. The difference between last year and this year is the key initiative is really the PST, the Problem Solving Team. And I'll get a little bit further what that is in just a second. The PST meets to address concerns in regards to the administration and local LEA, in regards to the current negotiating agreements. The purpose of the PST is basically explore solutions proactively before they even begin. Okay? That's the whole idea behind it. Our framework and our benefits behind this, we're going to share data openly. We're going to review our budget, review budget transparency, review solutions in advance of formal negotiations. This allows our IVB team to focus more on salaries and benefits, which is always one of the major points when we talk about IVB. Our goals are pretty easy. We're going to collect and share data openly. We're going to review budgets with transparency, as I said before. Reach, research viable options in complex issues, problem solve collaboratively and on the current negotiating agreement and then problem solve collectively in future negotiating agreements. So those are all the things that the PST is going to do. What makes the PST team is four members from the DO that are appointed through the superintendent, and there are four members from the LEA. We'll meet once regularly, once, once per month, over the course of the year until we actually begin IVB. The LEA will submit any concerns or issues that they have to me within three days of the meeting, and then we'll build an agenda based off of that. When we talk about IVB in general, we're going to focus on issues, not personalities. We're going to advocate interests, not positions. We're going to create options to satisfy mutual and separate interests. We're going to evaluate options based on values, not power. Share information openly and support effective problem solving. What's going to make up the team is composed of two appointed board members. The superintendent, the assistant superintendent, the chief financial officer, the human resource director, and our director of federal projects. Attendants and substitutes board members are asked if they're going to miss that they select a representative, a replacement. For the DO, the superintendent will appoint alternates when needed, and then if the superintendent's out, the assistant superintendent replaces him. The LEA team is selected by five members from the president. The president and the superintendent will select one of the first meetings going to occur, and then from there, we'll select the meeting dates at the end of each session. If conflict arrives, we can, together, can collectively decide to cancel or reschedule a meeting. The IVB process is in two parts. First, we're going to tell our stories. We're going to define our problems. We're going to describe the situation, explain the ideas or issues in detail. We're going to identify interests, clarify needs, concerns, focus on desires driven in the issues. We're going to bring in sort of options, potential solutions that address one or more of the interests. We're going to evaluate our options. We're going to review and refine options based off of values and shared interests. We're going to build consensus, and then we're going to implement. We're going to make sure we're clear. We're clear with our plan, who does what, how, when, where, and establish those communications with our stakeholders. Ground rules are pretty simple. We act in trust, which is posted right here. We're going to keep communications professional, solution oriented. We're going to focus on student centered outcomes. We're going to finalize decisions made by consensus. So thumbs up. We all have to agree, or it doesn't go. Which is a practice we did last year. Common topics, they give some ideas here. Student behaviors, teacher salaries, teacher workload, communication practices, hard to fill stipends, leadership opportunities, class size recommendations, compensation for work outside of the contracted day. We're going to use a decision funnel. You can envision a funnel, if you will. You're going to take broad ideas and you're going to pare them down to basically, you eliminate the ideas that have, that lack substance. And then we work for solutions that meet all parties' interests with upholding the district values. We come up with a draft agreement. The LEA ratifies. The president presents it to their LEAs, and then they decide if they're going to ratify it or not. From there, we present it to the board. If the board does not approve it, then it goes back to the IVB with recommendations from the board. And then we basically start the whole cycle over again, and then we bring it back to the board for official approval, for it to be official. If we cannot come up with consensus, we're going to clarify interests. We're going to ratify or redefine options. Table will study if we needed to. If we need to, return for review. And if we need to escalate it, we'll go towards formal negotiation and agreement, agree dispute resolution. Once we've accepted it, both parties, the district and the association, will share responsibility for monitoring, sending regular communications to staff, transparency, trust building, ensure agreements are implemented effectively. To summarize, IVB promotes collaboration, transparency, student focused outcomes. Our next steps are implementing our PST meeting, preparing for our IVB sessions. Board appointees in January. Administration and board select priorities for the IVB team to discuss in April, and the superintendent with the LEA principal, excuse me, president, will select when the meetings will begin, probably hopefully no later than April 15th, but that's all bears on when our budgets and our people work comes out, our numbers. And we're going to continue the meetings. Will we come up with a plan? Oh, yeah. Questions?
Well, at least from my perspective, part of the crux of the problem has always been that the board is ignored in the IVB process, which this new implementation of the PST seems to support that. Once again, the board is giving, is being given the negotiated agreement after the LEA has ratified it with the assumption that the board is just going to approve it, which is how we got into the pickle this year. And the board was accused of not negotiating in good faith, which was absolutely not the case. So, we had stated, I thought, that the agreement, the negotiated agreement should be kind of board before it is going to the LEA for ratification. Because if we're not integrating it with what's in it, which is exactly what happened this year and has happened the previous years, and we're always, it seems like just.
Pushed up against a wall.
Yeah, we are.
The deadline being the wall.
Yeah.
And the workforce to, we gotta just agree to it, or we don't have an agreement.
Yeah, I don't like this at all.
Well, and I'm going to tell you with counsel, I did counsel, I did speak with counsel. I've spoken to a couple of superintendents. The issue is if the board approves it, then it's final. So, then the LEA, the ratifying something that's already been decided on, and that's why they would never agree to that. And that's why we have to do, first, the LA has to ratify it. You guys have to take it to us. Take it to you guys. You decide no, and you tell us, hey, look, with the guidance, we want you to work on these issues, and then we go back to the table.
And why was the board portrayed as not negotiating in good faith when it chose not to approve it this past year?
I'm sure Thompson, you know, I wasn't here, but.
I understand that, but you were the one that reached out to attorneys and had conversations and came back with a statement that this board was not negotiating in good faith, which.
That was, that was a statement that from, I just shared from the attorney. That's all. I never said that, so.
Or Chair Thompson. So, would it, so if that's the case, if the decision of the board is final, would it be, maybe, instead of it being a final decision, we just put our final draft before the board, and then the board approves whether or not it can go on for ratification? And then, if the, if it to, to the LEA, and then once the LEA votes, then you then come back in with your final vote. Would that be fair?
I think you, I understand what you're saying exactly, but I think it opens up the comment that you're worried about. And that is, if, you know, if the board's the LEA, and they approve, comes back to the board, and the board doesn't approve, then we're going to be accused of not negotiating in good faith.
You guys said you were going to approve it.
Well, I think that needs to be clearly communicated in that, and one of the other.
Well, why can't we, why can't we have conversations that aren't action items? Can't we have discussions?
Yeah.
Why can't it come to us as a discussion item rather than an action item?
Exactly.
I think it could, and that's why we're here today.
That's what we need. That's what we need to see throughout the process, is discussion items on board meetings a couple of times before IVB comes to, or a final action item.
The prob, and again, I'm not saying problem, it's not the right word. The idea behind it is that's why you have two representatives on, on, and they can give an update if they would like in the process. And that's, I see you shaking your head. This is, all this is, is about talk. Nothing's settled. We're going to kind of, and that's why we're having this discussion.
Can you add something? Yeah, if you, can we talk about the timeline a little bit? Could you help me understand, help me understand the timeline here? If we're having our first IVB meeting, no later than April 15th, and we're worried about running into a wall with a deadline, is it wise?
The issue is when it comes down to the budgets.
You're not going to, you're not going to arrive at anything mutually agreeable in terms of financial issues until you know what the finances are.
Exactly.
Other items could be discussed and worked on prior to that.
That's the idea. That's the ideal, which one, with the PST, we're hopefully, we're going to rap, you know, work on those issues and hopefully have, we can streamline through those issues so we can really focus all on the financial.
The problem with no board members on that PST is really frustrating.
I think we could add one. I don't think there's any issue with that. If you'd like to do that, that's fine. Remember, this is just a proposal, guys. I have not finalized anything, all right? I'm listening.
Yeah, I think it would be wise to do that. What you set out there kind of replaces the old meeting confer.
Yep, it's exactly.
That we had in the past, but that meeting confer was with the board.
Yeah, it was with the board.
Yeah, so I think, you know, that, that needs to be in there somewhere.
So Jake, can you put that in the notes, please, Jake? So we will add a board member to the PST, okay?
Well, and part of the struggle that I have with the concept that, you know, the board member can update the board with what's going on in IVB, that does not promote discussion. It's the fact that we're being told what is happening, and we are not allowed, so to speak, any control on what is going on. We're just being told this is what's happening, and this is what we're doing, and this is, and, and it's, that is not collaborative. And the reality is, the LEA is supposed to be negotiating with the board, not a PST, not all these other quasi-teams that we're putting together to accomplish this mission. I just think it's very, again, we're just sweeping the board to the side and saying, you know, let's, you just approve it, and I.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think we want to do that.
Nope, we don't. But we've been doing it after year after year.
I would say that, you know, meeting confer, as it was originally structured, was not negotiations.
Right.
Correct.
And that's what this is.
It was simply conversation, discussion.
It is.
A little bit of problem solving.
Right.
It's the same.
Which I think is a good thing, because, you know, it heads off problems before they get.
Yeah, correct, correct.
So, you know, to, to continue that process in that vein, I think is appropriate, but, but it does need to have some board input. Now, when it comes to whether or not the board can have a discussion, the board can have a discussion as how they want. The question becomes, do you want to have that discussion in open session or executive session? Because normally, discussions about negotiations per se would be in executive session.
We are allowed to do that in executive session, and we can have a discussion without having an action item, even in executive session. Absolutely. And we just, I think that we, as a board, need the opportunity, just with the simple fact of having agenda items on board meetings, regarding this topic. That's it. I mean, that really is going to solve, I think, a lot of issue.
I think that's fair.
Because people, the, the board members that go into the negotiated, or the IVB meetings.
Work sessions.
They don't necessarily know what the other board members are.
They're not speaking for the board, and if they can't.
Well, the, the most important thing is that.
Hold on that, because that has always been a bone of contention with me, which we've stated before, and that is that oftentimes, we've not had sufficient information as a board to know how I should represent the board in the IVB meetings.
Well, that was important.
As we have a conversation.
Well, one of the, one of the pretenses, remember, is that laid out, is that we are to meet at, and the board is supposed to meet, and you guys are supposed to give us your wish list, and that would be, that's something different than you've ever done, in that sense.
When is that occurring?
That, that has to be before you even start IVB. It's, if I remember.
Okay, but where is that happening? Because your first presence is creating this PST that you are appointing four members to from the district.
Right, and we, and I agree with Mr. Jones. I think we can add a board member, absolutely. So, so it's going to be PST is first. If you go back.
But that's an ongoing thing where you're.
Right, yeah, but that's the first step, is what I had on there. So, IVB.
Two board members. So that would be at the beginning of the year, five members.
Yeah. Well, it, it isn't, I would say it's right before, you know, can, it's probably within, I set it up in April, I think is when I set it up, right beginning of April, you know, so I'm there.
It, it was one of your very, very first slides, Rusty, like very top of your presentation. Right there.
Yeah, that's just the makeup.
Right, but that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, oh, the PST.
Yeah?
So, so, on the PST, remember on the PST, really, we're looking at this year's negotiated agreement only, and we're trying to correct and resolve any issues that we're having at this point.
But how can you do that? How can you know what the board has contention with on that if you don't have a board member in that team?
So, it's, you guys already approved that. We're not changing.
We were strong-armed into it, Rusty. That's, that, so I don't want to go forward thinking that we're all, you know, roses and cupcakes over that negotiated agreement, because we wanted significant changes, and the door was shut in our face. And we did it to start the year and move forward.
Just, I'm with you. I'm with your team here. I'm not against you guys.
I know, but you keep bringing things up as if, oh, we were all on board, but we never were.
I never said that, okay? So I just want to be very clear. That's why we've made changes. That's why I've made changes, guys, to hopefully help the board in this and help administration so we can be a collective team.
Let's back up. What do you visualize as the timeframe or the timeline?
Yeah, I'm just saying.
How our PST will be.
Oh, the PST, we're, we're looking at, probably our first meeting would be in November.
Okay, so in the fall. Okay, so let's, let's kind of insert that timeline in there somewhere.
That's fine. Jake, can you put it in the notes and, so, should I do that?
And it's listed that they would meet monthly, right?
Yeah, it is. It is clear, yeah. Yeah, right there. Well, that's like, administration board will set priorities for the IVB discussion, and that's at the beginning, I see it. So you guys, that's something that you haven't done in the past, where we, we meet with you guys in the executive session, you tell us our priorities, and then we would go to the table with the board members that are going to be on the team with that information in our, in our pocket, which you guys have never been able to do.
Yeah, and I don't think April is soon enough to have those conversations.
Well, and I can move up the timeline. I know.
Because I mean, why are we, why would we appoint IVB board members if we're not even, in January, if we're not even meeting in?
Again, the timeline, we can change the timelines. I'm looking for recommendations. When would you like?
Well, I, I would say this, Rusty. Think about the fact that, go back to your slide where you defined the items that are negotiable. But I did have a question about the.
Items that are negotiable, so, under IVB, right, or under PST?
IVB, IVB close to you.
Common negotiation, common topics, funnel making decision. I don't think I ever listed specific.
There was a longer list of negotiables.
Oh, it was examples. I have it right here. Example issues.
Okay. Some of the things that are defined there as negotiable are not necessarily finance related.
Agreed.
So those things can be talked about in advance of April 15th.
Right, and that's the, that's the intent behind PST, is that we can hopefully take care of these things before we come into IVB to present to IVB, and hopefully they say, hey, look, did you do the work? We did the work. Here's the presentation. And then hopefully it facilitates IVB a little bit quicker or more efficiently based off of the information that the PST team has, does work.
I, I understand what you're saying, and I think the basic plan is, is correct. And that is to try to head off issues and deal with some of that stuff in advance, particularly on the negotiated agreement that's in place. But if we're going to talk a little bit about negotiated agreement for the next year, then those become negotiable items. And some of those, I think, could be discussed prior to April 15th, so we don't have this crunch feeling, experience from April 15th until, we have to publish the budget and all that kind of stuff. That's the, that's the crunch line that we got in.
So, and I, I feel, yeah, so, what, what would be the board's, again, I can move up timelines. There's no problem with that.
Because our point was that we were going to start negotiating from the get-go. Without, that actually was part of our motion.
Right.
Was that we would agree to that negotiated agreement if we could start negotiating.
Just a second. So, the idea behind all this, again, once it's decided, what are we negotiating at this point? That's, that's my point. And then when it really comes down to.
We're talking about deciding it. We're talking about making, knowing what the board's wishes are.
Right.
And having those conver, that's what we're talking about.
So we can have that meeting wherever you guys choose to have.
Well, kind of the tentative timeline that I'm seeing is that in the fall, you put together the PST.
Yep.
Their primary focus is going to be on the existing contracts.
Yes, sir, it is.
In January, we're going to talk about appointing members to the, to IVB. And from that point forward, if, once our, our membership is in place, we should be able to begin talking about.
I agree. Yeah, we can do that.
To come up with.
I agree a hundred percent. So, this right here, we can change to, this would be in January. Would that be acceptable?
That was, that was the idea, was to clean up all of the language stuff before, because the reason why the language stuff has never been really cleaned up is we've been waiting for finance to get numbers back, to see what it looks like, and then we have all this other stuff, and so.
Beings that are, Rusty, real quick, before you put January in there, I would put February, and the reason I say February is because our regular meeting isn't until the third week, and that, that's when we, that's when our new board members would take office. That's when we decide who is board chair. That's when we would be making all of those decisions. So, February, starting in February, once.
Sounds good. I think it's.
Rather than January.
Then you can get all of that, then you can get all of that other stuff, you know, pretty much tied up. And then by the time we get to May, when we have our financial.
That all that left is the financial pieces.
And that's the.
And the financial pieces, yes, that is some of it, but some of the other stuff was bigger heartburn.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
So those are the things that we want to have in place.
Okay.
I think realistically, though, respecting that we don't know what the numbers are, we can always entertain concepts of like, if the numbers come out to be that, that there's nothing, then we're bottom lined over here. But if the numbers come out to be 1% more or 2% more, we can start looking at what that looks like without being committed to, this is what we're doing. Yeah.
I think that's great. Yeah.
And like ranges.
I love it, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that would be a conversation that we. And that would be a conversation that we have in February, or is that, and I'm just getting timelines down.
That would be a, that, the point of convers-, like.
We could have.
That's why we're starting early.
Okay, right, sounds good. So we could open up to whatever we wanted, the board wanted to talk about. Sounds good, I love it. Sounds awesome. Anything else?
That's it.
So.
I was like, whoa!
Whoa, wait, 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 a second.
Both your voices.
Are we gonna close the meeting or am I here?
So I wanna recap, so, so far we changed the date, um, in regards to the board meeting and with administration to set, um, their priorities, correct? Uh, we've added a board member to the P S T, right? Is that correct? Is there anything else that's, Jake?
When you say administration, are you just talking about district personnel?
District personnel, yeah, yeah, with the board member.
I'd like to see some principles in there. They're, they're on the ground.
Yeah.
That's going on.
Yeah.
I don't know how that works.
Any feedback?
Are you, the point of the P S T is that that, they are kind of representing the district rather than the.
Right, and we're trying to work through the, 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 you know, whatever the negotiated issues are, if any.
Well, they're not union personnel.
Yeah, they're not, that's true, they're not, they're not part of the L E A.
I'm just curious, in the past, it was my understanding, and it could be mistaken, but the district leadership team was often reflective on whatever problems were coming up with respect to the negotiated agreement. So is the problem-solving team now the district leadership team? I mean.
No, not necessarily. It just, uh, it, 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 it can look somewhat, cause we all share a lot of roles, but it could look somewhat similar than it might be, but, uh, no, I would tell you, that's a really good statement. I really haven't thought it out that well, but I will tell you this. I, I think it's, it's gonna be very close to it, and so it's not gonna be the same team by all means, but there's gonna be members of that team on there. And, yeah, so. I'll tell you, the majority of the team, how about that answer, of the P S T is going to be the district leadership team, so.
So the P S, this problem-solving team is solely district personnel?
It is, yes, sir.
District office personnel?
Well, no, because you, you agree, yes, you agree.
Well, yeah.
And then, and then it's L E, and then some L E A members as well. So L E A members, a board member, and then district office, and so, I mean, and in those times, we, we do talk about maybe some potential financial issues that are coming up, thus Jessica's in the room. We have personnel, um, issues in that negotiated agreement, thus I'm in the room, um, just things like that. And then, and so we're just trying to get ahead of, like I said, that team is supposed to get ahead of the language piece of the negotiated agreement, so we have that out of the way by the time we get that many pieces.
Well, the P S T is supposed to be about problem, from what I understood.
Yep.
Is about problem solving the current negotiated agreement. Because the perspective is that we should just be rolling that current one into the following year with, you know, whatever changes the board may want at that, at that time, in an ideal world. The reality is the negotiated agreement, for years, we've been pushing to have significant changes to it and been shut down. So I think this first year will be a lot different than maybe what the intention of this is for the years down the road.
Right.
Because once something's finally cleaned up, then I get the concept, but it's really hard to just be like, oh, I'm all on board, knowing the amount of work that actually needs to be done.
And there's a lot of work that needs to be done, and so I think it, just having all the key players on that team working collaboratively and caring each other, I think we, we can make a lot more headway.
The other point that you guys made, that I, I made note of, is to add regular agenda items throughout the spring so that there is the ability for the board to have that as a standing discussion item to, that ongoing conversation. With enough information provided to the board to actually be able to have.
Personally, I think it should be on every agenda.
Yeah, that's what I.
Because if we have this P S T team that's supposedly problem-solving about this, the negotiated agreement and the problems that have been cropping up, but the board knows absolutely nothing about the problems that is being encountered within the negotiated agreement for the district.
How can we agree?
I know.
Right, well.
So I think that we should be updated on, once a month, on this.
I was gonna say that, but that should be a report from somebody, what, you know.
Yeah, um, the, the good and the bad about, at least at this point, obviously, um, we have not had any complaints or concerns at this point. We haven't met, but obviously the L E A, we did meet with them at the beginning of the year and they're just waiting for, you know, when were we gonna put this in play? Uh, but there were no complaints at that particular point. Um, wait, there is one complaint, that is right. Um, yeah, so we do have one, so I could give an update on that, so, um, in, in my, my presentation. Does, does that sound good? Or do you want me actually report on it?
I would prefer a report, not a presentation. We gotta wait for a presentation, yes.
Can we go back to your examples, the list of your examples?
Yeah. So, we're done.
Right there.
Can we talk to, I forgot. I'd like the board to take a hard look at the schedule, not suggesting anything in one direction or the other, but I'm going to assume and correct if I'm wrong, that what you have outlined here will become documented in such a way that it is a formal agreement with the L E A in terms of procedurals. And we signed off on, approved by the board, approved by the L E A. And if so, this laundry list then becomes written in stone.
Well, I, I wanna make it very clear, in whatever, now, this, is it in the examples? I can't remember. I, there is. Common topics, but we could, we could remove that, so, um.
Well, my concern is, for example, take, take the very first one, student behavior and teacher safety.
Yep.
I don't know how to negotiate that, I really don't.
Yeah, it was just an example, I forgot.
And so, well, and so what I'm suggesting, let's not have anything in that list that we can't, never really deal with.
Okay, that's, that's good, yeah. Do a note. Anything else? So now I'm gonna recap. So we're gonna add a board member to the P S T. We're gonna move up our meeting to clarify, uh, and also identify our interest with the board into February, correct? We're gonna give a report, a monthly report. If there is anything to report on, I, I will give that to the board, is that correct? Alright, sounds good.
And we're gonna add an agenda item to every meeting. For discussion, for just.
Just put, is it in February?
No, starting now, yeah.
Yeah, and the other thing was that, uh, and Mr. Jones just pointed out, on the examples, make sure that we know how to address these, these examples, that not some we don't know how to address.
One other, one other issue in terms of procedural agreement. Normally, you'll have a procedural agreement that outlines all of this stuff, plus what happens if you don't agree on a negotiated agreement.
It's listed in there.
It's gotta be really well-defined, though. I think it needs to be very, I mean, you know, we go to mediation, then we go to arbitration, and you know, all that kinda stuff.
Right.
If that's not spelled out somewhere,
Right.
you're gonna, you're gonna run into, you potentially are gonna run into a really serious problem.
Yep, yeah.
Well, respectfully, I don't understand why the common topics shouldn't be the categories that are within the negotiated agreement because that's what the focus should be on, is what's already in there. That is what is negotiated on.
Yeah, clearly in the past, primary negotiated items are financial issues.
Yep.
Plus leaves.
Yep.
And, you know, those.
Sick banks, that's right.
Laser bubbles out there, for example.
No, they're, they're, yeah, these are.
So you might wanna go back and, you know, double-check all that and try and straighten that out.
So I guess, but list leave, that's an example, yeah, that's a really good example.
Because we've got all that stuff on, and, and we've had some, some debate about whether or not to have sick leave back as a part of the negotiated agreement.
Right, recreate, yeah. Pull that out.
It's, it's its own policy now.
Yeah.
But it is still part of the negotiating.
It is, it is, but we also created that policy so we can pull it out because it takes up how many pages for negotiated agreements.
My, my, my whole point is be very, very careful in what you outline in terms of the procedural agreement because that's what you have to live with. That's what they're gonna take you to task for if you don't wanna sit out and do business with it.
Yep. Anything else? I don't have anything, Steve?
Topics need to be, um, the others within the negotiated agreement.
Yeah, and we can, um, so your, your recommendation, trying to toss in is to, um, the topics that we have in the negotiated agreement, that would be our examples, is that correct?
Okay.
Can you write that down? I think it's really an ideal, actually.
Yes, I'm not missing anything.
Yeah, I agree. Anything else?
Yeah, but I can't think of what it is.
You just wore better than you said your belt.
You said this is my report, please?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Um, respecting that you and the L E A president are selective in meeting dates, um, and the expectation and, and the desire for the board to be on the I B B, I B B team membership.
Yeah.
Do not make those meetings during the day.
Yeah, no, you know, I agree a hundred percent.
Well.
And the, and the teachers need that, well, even during the day, oh, wait, let me get clarification. During the day or you're saying after three o'clock, or you're saying at five o'clock? I, I just need clarification.
Saying after five.
Okay.
Because board members work.
Yeah.
And we don't keep a eight, seven, eight, nine to three thirty schedule. Um, so there has to be respect.
He does.
He's too young.
Yeah.
Or Carter, now that I'm retired. That's what he tells me, I, definitely.
So, I mean, it's gotta, or it's gotta be.
Chris is thinking, so.
I agree a hundred percent.
So we didn't know that he worked for the city?
Yeah.
I have no idea.
Surprise. I think we've all talked about it, I just thought, cause yeah, because he, he's like, Dave didn't know I worked for the city?
Everybody does.
For three years.
Might have thought he worked for postal.
Oh, no, that's me.
Yeah, that's.
Anything else? Thank you for your feedback, I appreciate it, and I am, I'm trying to make it much better, more reflective, more inclusive in depth.
I don't know if you put down what Brooke suggested, um, early on, which was that the board would, uh, but then I think Bob said something in contradiction to that, so we need clarification. Brooke had suggested that the board approve it going to L E A for ratification before it goes to L E A.
Sure.
So that the board has eyes on it first, and then.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't get ratified by us, but we get to see it before it gets ratified.
Right, we, Brooke's suggestion was that the board would approve the, uh, agreement going into the L E A for ratification because then it would come back to the board.
Actually, I approve it.
I have some argument with that, I think you, depends on, as often is the case, depends on the language you use. Because if you say, okay, it's approved to go to the L E A, somebody's gonna interpret that as being approved and if he comes back to us and we say, oh, no, we're not approving this thing, then suddenly we lose face entirely, yeah.
Oh, we don't have to approve it, we can agree that it is available time for it to go to the L E A.
That, that's my point, is you would be just be.
Or just be a discussion, just be a discussion item to me instead of taking action.
Right, yeah, we take no action, not even, not even approve it to.
I guess to that point, that discussion's gonna be in the executive session because you're looking at the final documents at that stage.
Yeah, that's true, that's a different.
So you can, you can say within the executive session to the superintendent, okay. We can move forward, make the.
Right, then, then no, we're giving no action.
We're providing him with guidance, but not.
That's exactly.
Yeah, that's a good, yeah.
Very good idea.
Well, it, we're, we're providing Rusty guidance, but we're also providing whoever the board member is on I B B to, you know.
Which way?
First way, to go forward for ratification on the L E A side.
Sounds good. Love it.
I just said that, I never thought back out.
I just wanna make sure I get it right, so notation is basically that it would be a, it, it's actually a negotiated item on the executive session, it would be, and we just go in the executive session, we don't even listen to the session.
No, honestly, we're using the IDOL code number for negotiation.
Yep.
Sorry.
The IDOL code number for negotiation.
Oh, yeah, 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 that's, I can't remember, yeah, 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 yeah.
C D, right.
I think it's a D, actually, so, yeah, yeah, just listen to all of it, you're gonna, yeah.
E L would be about?
Anything else?
That's what's saying, Jessica has a slush.
You do?
There's no such thing.
What is all that?
This is left my, my. I'm tired.
Don't talk about that, that's what makes it true.
Everybody that is watching this.
It does exist.
There's no such thing.
I am.
She just panicked.
I see their eyes.
Don't even give people the idea.
Also, that very bare bones here.
Plant ideas.
If there's nothing further to think about, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
On that note, if it's in the workshop, this was the presentation.
Yeah, I think so, yeah, right.
Bob, I don't have anything else to ask, that's a good.
That's a meeting, never.
Presentation's over.
Alright, on that note, we'll go ahead. In the meeting, it is six forty-seven.